Hi, Congress, meeting of the Windrush School Board to order. Please join me in my name as Secretary. Ms. Hightower, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So, we are missing our two representatives being on these lines out. Soccer, and we have a board member. I do not hear, but we have our board, so we are good to go. Are there any adjustments to be made?
There are none.
Okay. So, I'm taking a motion to approve the minutes of the Windrush School Board meeting from February 5th, 2025.
Salute.
Seconded.
All right. Any questions, discussion that we have? All right, all those in favor? And we'll move into our public comments section. If there are any folks in the room who would like to get up and be asked to go to the podium and give us your name. And also, we have folks on Zoom who are watching in. They can indicate if they're on their computer. Okay, perfect. We'll close the first public comment section and move into our court, starting with our superintendent report by Dr. B.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I regret to inform the board of the resignation of Brian Baird, Special Ed Ed Tech, and Josh Wheeler, Transportation Director. Also wanted to inform the board of Julie Wright, the school nutrition worker at the middle school, retiring effective the end of this year. And then moving on to the financial updates. Thus far, in February, we have spent $152,000. This is on par with what we have been spending monthly through this year with the frozen budget. If we stay on this track, we will get through to the end of the year with a little money left over. I'm also looking forward to having you here. Half of our administrators present their budgets this evening. You will hear from the other half of the team next week. And in your packet, there is a slight change on our budget proposal. It's been reduced to 9.33%. Again, I want to reiterate that 5.6% of this 9.33% is to get us out of the hole that we have this year, leaving out a 3.73% in the week. We made to get down lower, we had some adjustments to some benefit lines based upon changes that employees made, switching their healthcare plans. And in addition, we're reducing the hours of the loader bus driver to 20 hours per week. And we have also eliminated the $5,000 stipend for the transportation director. So, our second Q and A was on February the 12th, and Megan White joined me on that Zoom. And we had about 12 people attend that Zoom meeting. I presented a brief overview of the FY '26 budget, and then we answered questions. The next opportunity for the community to weigh in on the budget will be on March 28th at the high school cafeteria at 6:00. This will be an informal place for people to go and talk to specific administrators about questions that they may have on the different call centers. And we encourage the public, the town council, and our board members to come and ask questions about our proposed budget. And you will be hearing from our auditor tonight about the findings from last year's budget. And then the board's next learning opportunity will be on March 28th at the middle school to attend a town meeting. And I really enjoyed attending the boys and girls' basketball games over the break. Our students represented Windrush Public Schools very well. And whether they were winning or losing, they persisted, they were always respectful, and they continued playing as a team. And I just want to give a big shout out to both the students and the coaches for a season well played. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Foley. Does the board have any questions about the superintendent report? Okay. I don't have much for our chair report today. I did want to mention a few things. I did attend the town council budget presentation where Dr. Foley, the Monday before, for a meeting that was November 10. And I did want to speak a little bit about our search committee process. So, traditionally, search committees have been together by the chair. And this year, when Eric and I were discussing, you know, how we go about it, we ultimately decided that we wanted to give everyone an opportunity to be invited to the process. And so, I went and I spoke with Steve Bailey, our main school management. And we decided, or we brainstormed and thought the best practice for Windrush was to open it up to everyone by putting a survey out on our district website. And then we sent a blast out using our system, inviting folks who are interested to come and fill out a little survey out. The survey included contact information. It included what your stakeholder group was, whether you are administrator, teacher, community member, parent, central office tag, et cetera. And then we just asked that each potential candidate put, you know, information about why they would like to serve on the committee, what they might have. And so, we had 30 folks to be interested. And then, you know, we read the responses and just chose two, we chose two representatives, two voices to be heard from each of our stakeholder groups. And so, I just wanted to cover that because I think it was a great process that worked really well for us. I think we captured each stakeholder's voices. And one thing, if I had to go back and do it, I, because I had someone contacting the community and just asked about folks who are not in the school system, like just general committee members, like business owners, maybe not parents specifically. And so, if I had to go back, maybe I would think more about that, opening up to, maybe using an M system to communicate and possibly doing it that way too, so that we're truly getting a representation. I don't feel like it wasn't, but just there's room for improvement perhaps. And since this was our first time, I'm very proud of what we did. And, you know, I thanked, right, even the spokes who were involved, helping me to do that survey, whatnot on the website. And calling to was very helpful in that. And additionally, just the committee itself, we had 10 members. I feel that we worked so well together, and I just appreciate the time that they've served on the committee itself. Because they know that it takes time from schedules, and it's important. So, that does conclude my report. And so, once we do, we'll move into our committee report, starting with finance.
Um, yes. So, we met, we signed off some warrants, we gave payrolls 16, 17, and 18, and warrants 15A, 15B, 16B, 16A, 17A, and 17B. We also had a finance committee meeting, which discussed the budget, which the superintendent already went over. We also discussed trying to sell a school, purchasing for $12,000, and its book value between 8 and 11, so we're going to try to sell it for about 10. That's it.
Thank you, Tim.
And policy. Yes, the policy committee meeting, the policy committee met this past Monday, and you can see it's like here on the agenda.
And negotiations, we have more certifications and bus driver negotiations, we have to have ongoing meetings. We have two more meetings in March. All right. We will head into 4.5, which is our FY '24 audit presentation by Jennifer Connors. Yes, please.
There's no microphone.
I was going to get it for her.
Thanks for having me. So, as you said, I'm here to talk about the 2024 audit. You should have a set of graphs that looks like this, a presentation that we put together just in overview for the school department's audit itself. And I will say that the audit is not finalized yet. We have completed most of the school department's side of the audit, as well as the compliance testing. We have a few more things to do on the town side. So, unfortunately, we can't finalize the school department's financial statements until the town side of the audit is also completed. So, I'm going to go ahead and dive into these graphs. If anyone has any questions or comments, feel free to jump in at any point. On the second page, this is an overview of the audit results. And to give you an idea of the timing of the audit, we were here for some pre-audit work in June. And then we came back for a week to do the field work itself of the audit on October 7. The financial statements themselves, they're not dated, but they do have an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion on the financial statements. In addition to the financial statements, we also provided a draft of the report that's required under government auditing standards. Under those standards, we are required to test internal controls as they relate to financial reporting. And under those requirements, we had no material weaknesses, which that would be the highest level of finding. The next step down from that would be a significant deficiency, which, what that means is it's not necessarily something that's systemic, but it's just serious enough to bring it to your attention. I will mention that last year, the school department did receive a material weakness related to the middle school cash receipts that has been downgraded to a significant deficiency this year. So, there was definitely some improvement in that area. And I think no way to that.
Jennifer, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted to know that we've got some process improvement going forward with that for the future.
I'm sorry, was that a question or on?
No, I'm asking you, do we have process improvement steps in place so that we don't have that as a significant deficiency in the future?
So, we have provided our comments to the school department, but we have not received official management responses yet. So, I'm not entirely sure how that is going to be addressed going forward.
Thank you.
I don't know if you've had a chance to talk to the, no, okay. That's definitely something that we will address before the reports are finalized because we are required to include management responses as to how they will correct these going forward. In addition to the two reports I just mentioned, the school department is also part of the uniform guidance reporting. And what that is, is because the town receives and spends over $750,000 in federal grants, it is required to undergo what's called a single audit. And under those requirements, we come in and basically test the school department's largest federal grants, and the town, while the town does have large grants. In this, in fiscal year 2024, we tested the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund, also known as ESR. And then we also tested the school nutrition cluster, which is your school lunch program. And under those requirements, we didn't have any internal control findings. So, no material weaknesses and no significant deficiencies, as well as we did not have any compliance findings so far as the grant requirements for those programs. So, overall, clean results. The next few graphs that I have are the numbers from the financial statements themselves. So, the first graph that I have here on page three is the school department's general fund fund balance/fund deficit. And I've actually included the numbers going all the way back to 2018. 2018 was the first year that we started doing the audit for the Windrush School Department. And you can see that the school department actually had a deficit of almost $1.6 million. So, it has actually come quite a ways between 2018 and 2024. And this graph also does break down the fund balance into the different categories. So, in 2024, you'll see there's a small amount for non-spendable fund balance. And that is what it sounds like. There's a portion of your fund balance that is not readily available to be used because it is made up of prepaid expenditures. The assigned fund balance is the portion that has been internally designated or set aside to be used in next year's budget. And I will point out in 2024 that the full amount that was budgeted to be used in 2025 was $350,000. But because you had to show a portion of your fund balance in non-spendable, what you have in assigned is basically what you have left for fund balance. So, in 2024, unassigned fund balance is zero. Now, in total, fund balance has increased $1.9 million between 2018 and 2024. And in fiscal year 2024, total fund balance was a positive balance of $339,000. And in fiscal year 2024, total fund balance decreased by $658,000 from fiscal year balance of 2023. Most of that had to do with a transfer to the capital reserve of $600,000. We'll talk a little bit more about fund balance here on the next one as well. On page four, this is the general fund, unassigned fund balance as a percentage of budget. In 2024, the percentage is zero because unassigned fund balance is zero. But I did want to include this just for historical perspective. You can see that going back the last four fiscal years, the school department's general fund unassigned fund balance has varied significantly, starting at 4% of the budget, then it went to 10%, then a little under 6%, and then to zero. The state does currently, in FY '24, allow up to 9% of the budget to be carried for in unallocated fund balance. That threshold is going to drop down to 5%. So, you are still allowed to carry up to 5% of the budget in unassigned funds. And anything over that, you have a three-year period to basically spend that down or come up with a plan to use it. On page five, we have an overview of the general fund revenues. This is a budget-to-actual analysis. And looking at some of the larger budget-to-actual variances, you can see the state education subsidy was higher than budgeted by about $58,000. And that has to do with changes at the state level. Medicare reimbursements were also higher than budgeted by about $96,000. And that is simply because that amount is difficult to predict. Other revenues were also $44,000 over budget, and that had to do with unfunded interest revenues. In total, revenues were $192,000 over budget, which was about 2% of the budget. And then on the next page, we have the same graph for general fund expenditures, again, looking at the budget-to-actual variances. Regular instruction expenditures were over budget. There was an increased use of substitutes that were more than budgeted. Special education expenditures were over budgeted due to an increase in required services. Other instruction expenditures were under budget as athletic transportation and coaches' salaries were lower than anticipated. Student and staff support expenditures were under budget as costs related to technology, equipment, and software were lower than budgeted. System administration expenditures were over budget due to higher-than-expected legal and service fees. School administration expenditures were over budget due to higher-than-expected equipment costs. And transportation expenditures were higher than budgeted due to the dentist paid used drivers instead of purchased transportation. And I will also mention that there is a positive budget variance for debt service. And that actually has to do with the timing of your debt issuances. So, in fiscal year 2023, you paid off a 2002 bond. And then in the current year, you issued a new revolving loan. But you didn't actually make any payments on the new revolving loan until FY '25. So, there's a little bit of a timing difference. So, if you had actually had debt service closer to where you're normally budgeted, you could have potentially been over budgeted. As you can see, total expenditures were, excuse me, were around $69,000 under budget, which works out to be about 1% of the budget. So, it was very close. The next graph that we have, this is the general fund expenditures. Each category expresses a percentage of total expenditures. We've included the fiscal year 2024 amounts as well as the 2023 amounts to compare to last year and 2022. And then we've also included the statewide percentages. These are actually available on the state's website. And they provide some good information as to how you compare to some of the other school departments and school districts out there, as well as the statewide average numbers as well. So, to give an idea of where, how to compare to the state's numbers, both regular instruction and special education are lower, as well as career or technical education. Those are all lower than the statewide averages. Regular instruction was around 2% lower. Special education was around 1% lower. On the flip side, student and staff support expenditures are about 1% higher. School administration was around 2% higher. Transportation is around 2% higher. Facilities and maintenance is around 3% higher. And then debt service was actually around 4% lower. So, and then other transfers, you'll see last year was around 7.5%. So, that did decrease by 7% this year. Debt service also decreased around 4% this year. And then, regular instruction and special education, as compared to last year, they actually increased, as well as school administration and transportation facilities, all those percentages increased compared to the prior year. I know that's a lot of numbers. Do you have any questions about any of these graphs?
Any questions from the board?
I was going to talk a little bit about the comments that we had. The first one that I mentioned was the significant deficiency for the middle school cash receipts. So, for the middle school activity funds, we actually selected five deposits to test. And in those procedures, what we do is we obtain the documentation, and then we compare what the procedures were to how they're supposed to be performed based on the procedures that are written up. And we did find that three of the five were actually missing documentation of a secondary account. The middle school does require that a second person double-check and sign off on the deposits before they're taken to the bank. And three of those deposits were missing that secondary account. Which, activity funds typically have issues as far as segregation of duties, where you have one person who's performing most of the work on those funds. So, we feel that that is actually a good control to have in place, to have a second person verify those deposits. So, our recommendation is that the school department should ensure that the personnel are following their current policies and procedures. The other comment we had, we had a couple of comments that follow up with the other comment category. Segregation of duties was one of those. That's a comment that we've had for several years. And for those of you who are not familiar with segregation duties, that is when you take a procedure or a process and break it up so that you don't have one employee that's performing all parts of that procedure. The example that we usually use is cash, where if you have one employee who is taking in the cash and preparing the accounting records for the cash, you typically don't want that same individual also preparing the deposits, taking them to the bank, doing the bank reconciliation. Ideally, you have a second person involved, so that way, there's kind of a balance and check on those controls. You do have fairly good controls here at Central Office, but there are some areas where segregation of duties could be better. So, we keep this comment in here just so that you know that it is an ongoing risk. Of course, we also point out that segregation of duties is a cost-benefit analysis. To have ideal segregation of duties, you would have to basically hire more staff, and that's not always ideal. The last comment that we had had to do with the school department fund balance. So, as we pointed out in that graph, the school department, excuse me, sorry. The school department's unassigned fund balance went from $721,000 in 2023, which was about 6% of the budget, to zero in FY '24. The school department has spent several years building up its fund balance so that it does have a cushion. And generally speaking, it is best practice to have some unassigned fund balance, just so that you do have a cushion. So, that way, if you have a year in which your revenues are unexpectedly short, for example, if you have cuts in federal funds or state funds, or if you have some unanticipated expenditures, that way, you do have that little bit of a cushion to sort of make that easier to absorb that shortage. So, our recommendation is that the school committee review the current planned use of fund balance and maybe set a goal to gradually build that unassigned fund balance back up again.
Want to add a question?
I do. And so, you were talking about the segregation of duties, and that was entirely met. Was that the, where were the problems? Was it Central Office, was it the middle school, high school? Where did you see the problems with that?
We would typically see that at the individual schools where the activity funds are, because typically, you have one person that is taking in the cash, preparing the records for the cash, preparing the deposits, doing the bank reconciliation, writing the checks. There is a little bit of mitigation there. Typically, the principal of the school is the one that signs the checks. So, there is a little bit of overview there. But generally speaking, you, in an ideal world, you would have a second person involved in that procedure. You do have it a little bit in the central office, but not as much. You have a short amount of staff in the school department as far as the accounting staff go, so they tend to perform a lot of functions that overlap.
So, given that, given the, what did you call the significant? There's a problem with some of the cash receipts for the middle school, given that, what do you say, more education for the people who are, about the procedures for the people who are doing that? Or, I mean, do you have any recommendations about how to remedy that going forward?
Well, it is part of their written-on procedures that there is a second person that counts those deposits. So, for whatever reason, the second person just wasn't doing that. And I'm not sure if that's because they weren't aware that that wasn't included in their written procedures or someone wasn't available at the time. I'm not really sure of the reason. But yeah, probably more education as to what they should be doing.
Reviewing those procedures.
Yes.
Policies.
Thank you.
Can the board have any questions? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Good. You're welcome.
We'll head into item 4.6, our legislature, our legislature reports are attached. Anyone have some more questions besides this?
Is there two actually?
I was wondering, because I saw that the students had a really cool opportunity with us at Hands-on Science at the grade school with the main album killer project. So, because I know we have a tight budget this year, how is that able to be done? What programs, see the programs here, but how does that work?
Ms. Barassa is one of our.
Did you come? Did you go to the?
Oh. Sorry.
So it's through our third grade teacher, Ms. Barassa. She has had connections with them. And this is their, I'm gonna say second year, but I think third year. I think this is the second year that she's invited them in. And it's part of what they do for schools. So it's through her interest in doing it and bringing it in for the whole third grade team. It's actually, I had never seen it before last year. And it is the coolest thing when they dissect that. Have you seen it?
Yeah, so yes, we've done that sometimes at my house. Because my kids like to keep a puzzle together, like the mouse puzzle. All the pieces together, like the full skeleton.
Yes, yes. So it is a very, like, cool experience for the kids. And yeah, they come home to talk about it, right? And just how they find all the little pieces and they compare, it's just incredible. Yeah, it's Ms. Barassa started that with the group team.
Yes. I keep comparing that. I know, there's a lot here, you know, a lot of really good things. And I'm just happy to be reading it. That's one that I was curious, because it's such a great opportunity to read. I'm gonna have to pull that off with this tape I did this year, so.
Yep, yep. Very great, well, all done. Okay, any other questions or comments? More regarding the administrative reports at all? Okay, we get to off the hook today. All right, we'll head into our administrative presentations. So first we have Smith-Balvin. The school nutrition program.
All right, so just let me add this for food cost increase for the school year. It's gonna be up $37,000. We all know that food costs, it goes up quickly all the time. Summer food service program is up $4,500. We served a lot more meals last summer than we did previously. So of course that comes with increased food costs. And then professional development is up $2,900. Hoping to get staff out to do some training and conferences to just help and develop some more leadership skills. And we are not asking for any money from the local projects, which is always nice, right? And then we have just meals served in 2020, sorry, so 2024. We did $165,988 meals. And this year, based on what we've been serving, we're expected to serve approximately $169,000 meals. And then next year, projecting to serve a little bit more than this year at $172,000. Just have it up smooth and no significant increases.
Is there any questions at all? Thank you very much for the presentation. Next presentation will be by Joel Ward, our adult ed director.
So this year, adult ed is asking for no increase in local funding. We have, for 2026, we are in units that need thousands in local funding. And I will remain the same. We have seen an increase in our state subsidy for 2026, it's $9,750. And participated, that we used a little bit of what we had for unallocated funds, particularly for multi-year construction. No other real significant changes that we were able to do this because this year, we recently replaced our administrative assistant. And that position has gone from 40 to 35 hours. And we hired someone who's interested in our summer college. So it saves us a minimum evening, so allows us to do that. And we'll be able to use the increased funds for high school completion, additional hours. And in our arrangement with MSAD 11R, year two, we have an advisor, which has been a benefit to give attention to our students. And we intend to, I'll tell you right now, that that has really saved us because we are down a teacher, and she's a certified teacher, so she has been putting in for us. So some of the grant monies that we get through the state and go and to the federal government, I'm going to MSAD 11 to, because she's paying fully out of there, because she is definitely contributing over here and helping us out in a big way. A little correction to numbers down there, those students with the two sites, I counted five students extra on the number for '24, '25. So in the course of a year, we'll have 20 students that, 20 individual registrations. We'll probably see more students than that come in and start the process that don't actually get registered. At this, at the end of December, we actually had 16, not 21, sorry. Whereas all of last year, we had 20. So we do, the increase in instructional hours will be important as we are seeing, I think, probably, and I don't know the exact numbers, but we are, I feel like we have a sizable increase in the number of younger students between 60 and 20. So that's this year.
Okay, thank you. Does the board have any questions? Are we getting adult ed questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next presentation will be by Joel Stuntin, and I believe he.
I'm here.
Okay. Thanks, Joel.
Excuse me. Let's start on page 42 if we could. It kind of outlines the major increases for athletics as well as maintenance. And you got some increases here, obviously. I think most of you remember from walking around in the fall. Excuse me, that there's quite a few areas of maintenance that we need to take a look at. Looking at next year, the major increases would be the metal doors in the cafeteria at the high school. Also, retired playground, the roadway at the grade school. And then the MEC, which runs our automation for eating and cooling at the grade school. In athletics, excuse me, sorry, if I can pull there. The biggest increase this year is uniforms. We have a four-year cycle for all of the teams, but we're also bringing the girls soccer back. So we are bringing that to the table. And then we need some soccer balls downtown, just because the ones we have currently are cutting the turf. So that's a prevent, you know, move there. The other significant increases are, you know, officials have gone up, board parties have gone up, services to cover games. We're also starting a turf replacement fund, so that in 10 to 12 years, we'll have the wanted to do that, as well as the revenue we get from the turf. The reason I wanted to start out 42 was because the capital improvement line of $100,000 is really the biggest ask that I have this year. If you could turn to page 41 now, you can see that there's a three-year plan, excuse me, yet, of what we're trying to get accomplished. And I won't insult you by reading all this, because you can read yourself, but if you look at the bottom, there's a significant list that was identified five years ago by an architectural study that we haven't got to. And if we don't have some sort of capital improvement line to start picking away at these things, instead of just taking what's left over from the year before, we're gonna be in a lot of trouble. Some of these things, I'm not trying to sound dramatic, are things that you probably wouldn't be able to get off of. So yeah, there's some increases here, athletics and maintenance. The other increase in athletics that you'll see actually has not overall impacted all of my salary and it's listed right now currently in maintenance instead of athletics. And so is my assistant's salary. Those are the two increases as far as that goes. At the bottom, on page 42, I think it is, you'll see the participation that we have from students every school. I see you guys have been around, am I saying the wrong pages?
Yes.
You are.
Okay, I'm sorry, I wanted to exploit you. So are you guys with me on those pages or no?
Yes, yes.
Yes, you're referencing page 43 right now.
Okay, sorry, so page 43, you see in the bottom that there's a list of participants this year in athletics, as well as co-curricular, and that's based off 431, 612. Joel Burnham and I work together on the athletic budget to make sure that we're not duplicating anything. I will say in the athletic budget that there's nothing there. We already cut some things that we had asked for that are needed, that we're one of the year without, I guess, just to try to help out and get to where we need to be. But I strongly implore you to take a look at the maintenance and support the fact that we need to start doing something instead of kicking it in the can down the road or making it drop.
Thank you, Joel. Yeah, thank you, Joel. Does the board have any questions? I don't know if you can hear me now.
Yes, again.
Could you just explain what the mechanical engineering computers are, what do those do?
The MEC is basically, so we have a program that runs, like, something as simple as turning on the domestic alarm at 6:00 in the morning to shut off 5:00. The MEC is what talks to the program through our computer. Those are now 20-plus years old. We had two fail last year. We had them rebuilt, and they're looking through. As Ms. Randall could probably attest, the cafeteria was quite cold last year until we were able to get that fixed. So it's kind of one of those things that we have to continue to update, as well as make sure that they're aligned correctly so we don't lose them in the white light.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much, Joel, for your presentation.
Absolutely, thank you, Ezra, I mean, I appreciate it.
And our last presentation will begin by Dr. Foley regarding the transportation.
Thank you. The board has a new updated sheet in their package that is not, it should be written in the package. On your overview sheet of the transportation budget, you will see that it's up by about 15%. And that's primarily due to us trying to create this baseline budget so that going forward, we can compare apples to apples. So a lot of the expenses for transportation last year were under co-curricular and other articles. So now all, Nick Cool and I decided it would be better to have it all under the same article. So that's why you see the big increase in this budget. We've established an overtime line, which I talked about when I gave the overview of the budget at the last board meeting. So previously, we had nothing budgeted for overtime, and that's very unrealistic because of the extracurricular trips and the field trips. It's, I would say, impossible not to incur overtime. So we have budgeted based upon, you know, just historical numbers, $32,000 there. We have also reduced one bus driver. We have done a reduction of the year-round bus drivers. We have two, and we've reduced their hours in the summer so that they'll both be going like half-time in the summer. We've also just reduced the, what I call the floater bus driver, is like our sub-bus driver. We've reduced their hours from 30 hours per week to 20 for savings of $11,000. The other thing that had not been budgeted was for our midday shuttle runs. We have some students that go from the middle to the high school for math. We have some other students with disabilities that need to be shutted midday. And we, of course, have our pre-K runs, and none of that was previously budgeted. So now that's really part of creating what I would call the baseline budget. And that is a brief overview of the transportation budget. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Does the board have any questions regarding the transportation budget?
And I just wanted to add for the public, we have a budget link. And all of these presentations that were given to the board tonight will be posted tomorrow on the website. If anybody, you know, has questions about them, if you have any questions, but my office is always ready and willing to answer any questions you may have. So just give us a call.
Thank you.
I do have a question, just so we can have it on the record. When it comes to purchasing vehicles for our schools, what is the rules around cabinet work in front of the board for approval? Especially spending that much out of our budget line?
I'm not so sure. You couldn't probably answer that better than I can. But I think, I would think that this would come up during budget presentations. And I'll just keep that that's what, that's when I have previously in other districts presented that. So I would say, you know, we are going to need another bus or we're going to need another van. And then I would explain how that is like funded through the budget. And then for buses, we do get, if the state approves it, that over the next three years, we are reimbursed for that. But are you talking about, for example, the car? Or are you talking about the vans? Because the vans, we do not get reimbursement for. So I would expect that when we need to purchase another van, that that would probably first go to the finance committee, and then that would come to the board through the finance committee or through the creation of the budget for the following year.
As far as I've been on board in the year that I followed prior to, when anything, whether it was a van, a bus, our private vans that we use, that has always gone in front of the board. My question is, is the private vehicle that was purchased that was never put on public record, was it brought in front of the board? It was brought up in a question during last year's budget meeting, and it was said that that was not the board's business to know. That's why I just wanted to put it out here. As there seems to be now, we have this vehicle that was $12,000 purchased, I think, last year. And now we're taking off on that.
The vehicle that we're speaking of was purchased almost two years ago. And so I think that's just normal depreciation, right? And I would, again, I would just reiterate that if I were purchasing another similar type vehicle going forward, that would go to the finance committee probably first, and then it would be discussed in a superintendent.
My just concern is it just never came in front of the board in the town, or the people didn't know that that was purchased out of our school funds. So I just wanted to put that transparency, since we are, you know, try to uphold that integrity in our community to let the public know that. Thank you.
Thank you. My point, if I may, just a quick follow-up. Right, so I'm just wondering if, because it has to do with the personnel contracts, if so, that's something that occurs between a perspective of an employee and the superintendent, if that sort of thing can be lost. And I don't think it should be. I think that that's something particularly, you know, that seems to go above and beyond what we do for, you know, just in front of the bill, you know, if there's something outside, outside a box like that, you know. I don't know that we've got any kind of policy that comes that says, you know, that this needs to be brought before the board. And maybe that's something that we need to look at. I also was completely surprised to learn that that had occurred.
Do you have commentary on that? If that's a big question, I can choose that for a clarification on that.
Oh, I don't think there's clarification. We do have an adminis, you know, the administrators do have an association. And so their salaries are kind of determined by the terms of the contract. And this kind of felt outside of that. And again, you know, all I could tell you is what my practice would be going with.
Thank you. Any other questions in the board? Heading into old business, item one, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the policy B C H, student board member, for second reading. And did anyone, do we need to discuss this? No, okay. And all those in favor? See you later, Spoh. Moving to our new business, six point one, elect the following administrators for two-year contracts, twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six, and twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-seven. Smith Hoffman, district school nutrition director. Jeff Burnham, with the middle school dean of students and athletic director. Alexis De School, it's a high school dean of students and in the line director. Jay Dupore, Winter High School principal. Joshua Farr, adult ed education director. Sue Posit, special education director. Smell, Winter Middle School principal. Joel Stuntin, district studies director and Winter High School athletic director. Megan White, director of teaching and learning.
And. Yes, I would just like to wholeheartedly recommend the extension for the administrator contracts. And I want to thank these administrators for helping us to navigate this school year with our budget challenges. They have risen to the occasion, have gone above and beyond, and have continued to move teaching and learning forward. In addition, there has been a concerted effort to increase communication across the district, which I believe has been achieved this year. Bill Bradley, the former NBA basketball player, once said, "Leadership is unlocking people's potential to become better." These administrators have helped their staff to grow this year, even with limited financial resources. And because of their leadership, Winter Public Schools is stronger today than it was a year ago. I hope you can show your appreciation and support by voting to extend their contracts for an additional year.
All those in favor? Do you have a recommendation or? It's in the four zero. Okay, moving on to item six point two, to elect Katrina Christian Swinton at the Winter Grade School Sister Principal for two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-six.
No, just a review. She's only here separate because she's only served.
Thank you for that clarification. And all those in favor? At this time, we'll head into our public comments section, our public comment section. So there are folks in the room that would like to come and speak or those on Zoom, do so as. Okay. Okay, we'll close the second public comment section and enter into our school board comments.
Yes, I mentioned this earlier when we were looking at the reports from the administrators. I was really happy to read from Jay Dupore that you have seen a drastic reduction in student failing courses this year. Yay. What do you attribute, what do you attribute that to?
That's a great question. I would attribute that to the hardworking teachers that went to my school and their commitment and dedication to communicate with families and their diligent work with kids to try to always raise them up and pick them up when they're behind. I don't have to ask, I ask a lot of them, but I don't really have to ask because they do it without me asking that. So I can take zero credit for that. It goes to our great staff.
Thank you so much. I also have to say, you mentioned the drug prevention community. I'm very happy to be part of that and so impressed with all of the efforts and the commitment from the whole cadre of individuals or stakeholders and that. I'm really excited about the work that you're doing.
The other comments.
I just want to just remind everybody that one acts, all the students are doing an awesome job. I get a bit nosy in here, a lot of practicing. But I'm really looking forward to this year's skip. I'm sure my information will be helpful to people. If you go enjoy and watch, it's going to make a show.
Close our school board comments. And at this time, we'll enter into an executive session. They're quickly acting in after this. Those folks who have been asked to stay behind will stay. Those who have not been invited, you guys will attend. All right, item ten, I'll entertain a motion for consideration and approval to employ Dr. Becky Foley of Superintendent of Schools with two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year as recommended by the superintendent and search committee. All those in favor? Again, I would thank you very much for your vote. At this time, and without objection, I declare this meeting adjourned at seven twelve.